I will call the special meeting of June the first to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Murphy?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Chirco?
Here.
Councilmember Doby?
Here.
Councilmember Gross?
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrink?
Here.
Special order to the day is the award of the contract for the 2020 fireworks display. Mr. Simmons, would you care to take over?
Sure, thank you, sir. So, this is obviously a discussion item for the council with regards to the awarding of a contract for a fireworks display on the Fourth of July. We have members of the team here that are obviously very familiar with what exactly the event looks like. I did want to update the council and the public with regards to some of the discussions that we've been having surrounding this event. Luckily, working last week and through the weekend, we've been able to confirm with the base that we will be able to actually at this moment have participants actually go onto the base. I'd like to thank Councilmember Gross for getting that ball rolling with the general Jaeger. Obviously, I think that we have some, a lot of support there with regards to having this event. The base in other conversations has expressed how they see it as a benefit to the community and something that they would like to see continued. They did put forth a number of stipulations, or I'll call it guidelines, that still need to be ironed out, but just general things that I want to make the council and the public aware of with regards to just how exactly this event might differ from the events that we've had in the past. And obviously, if Ron or Emmeline would like to jump in in order to kind of fill in the gaps that I leave, having not ever experienced one of them myself, but that this event would be smaller in terms of scope. It would be a viewing event as opposed to the festival-type atmosphere that is normally accompanied with the Fourth of July extravaganza. There would not be food trucks, there would not be grandstands, there would not be the, what I'll call the amenities that normally go along with this event. Essentially, there would be a shortened window of time where we would bring vehicles onto the base. They would be distanced six to 10 feet apart to allow for people to exit their vehicles and still maintain social distancing while watching the fireworks. The base would require that everyone is wearing face masks and that there would be, obviously, we would provide amenities such as porta-potties and hand washing stations and such, but this largely would be an event or venue to be able to see the fireworks and then to move everyone off of the base once that, once those fireworks had concluded. I have spoken with Seal Beach, they are very supportive and still are offering financial assistance to this event. Cypress has decided that they are not going to be participating this year. I know that they had pulled out last year as well. But by and large, what this, an approval of this contract today would allow for is for staff to begin to take the necessary steps to prepare, get the necessary vendors in place to make sure that we can have a well-organized event. Obviously, there would be a fair amount of promotion that goes along with that, with the rule sheets as to what exactly the expectations are, especially going on to an activated military base or installation at this moment. That being said, there are the number of unknowns, given the current events going on throughout the state, that there might be a need for the base to change their position on this moving forward. That being said, in the event that we were unable to fire off the fireworks, for whatever reason, we would have until July 1st in order to make that determination and still incur no costs or no loss of excess fees with regards to money that's related to the fireworks. The company would simply package our fireworks, hold them, and we would be ready to use them next year in the event that the base was no longer able to facilitate that area for us. So with that, obviously, Ron, Emmeline, if there are other items that I've missed, please feel free to jump in and then obviously, we're open to any questions from the council. Ron, I'm sorry, you're, I think you're muted.
Doesn't say he's muted, that's weird.
Emmeline's been working on that for like 18 years.
It finally works.
Nice job.
You know, he moves offices and this is what happens.
Too bad he's not at home, one of his kids can fix it.
He's, he's sitting in an office about 10 feet away from me, so.
I'd say you might need to jump on with you, Chuck.
Yeah, Ron, if you, if you like, just kind of come in here.
Oh, that's gonna be so cute.
Does he come out of that closet behind you?
Right?
80 might be good there.
I just want to say, I'm sorry I gave Chuck the wrong information, but it's zero fee if it's 15 days cancellation prior to the event. If we cancel after the 15 days, then we have to pay a $1,300 fee.
So, thank you for that. And so, again, if, obviously, there's a window of time here for us to let the situation stabilize with regards to the activation of the personnel on the base, period of time for our staff to begin to start to work on what those items are, and then 13 days?
15 days.
15 days, which takes us to the middle of the month, which obviously, again, there's a council meeting at the middle of the month where we would be able to provide you with an update. But I would stress this, that these 15 days between now and the 15th, I believe are crucial to allowing staff to negotiate the necessary contracts, get vendors in place for parking control, and also the porta-potties and such to be able to put those pieces in place, because normally, this is an event that would have a three-month lead time. And even though we are scaling this back significantly, I'm still concerned about a, trying to throw it together all at the last second and not being able to put in place the protections that we know we need to have in place.
So, my understanding would be that part of the restriction is that instead of allowing people on the base at four o'clock, we may not be allowing them on until 7:30, eight o'clock for a 9:00 or 9:30 fireworks show, that they would need to stay in the area of their vehicle with safe social distancing, and there won't be any real entertainment other than the fireworks. Is that correct?
That is the plan, sir. We are at the moment working on what exactly the timing would look like. Obviously, we want to make sure that we allow enough time for the cars to get onto the base, that we have proper queuing and those kind of things, but I feel like that is a conversation that we want to have both with our parking vendor and with the personnel at the base and before we set a finalized time. And, and as you are aware, the base is activated, personnel are actively doing other things right now as opposed to fireworks. And so, we figured it best to give them a day or two to let them focus on their primary mission before we finalize any of these details. But yes, Ron and Emmeline will have a fully baked plan that we'll be able to put to them so that they can digest it, tell us if they think that it works for them, and then we can make adjustments as needed.
Hey Chuck, just real quick, and it might be too early or we might not know the answer. You know, usually in the past, many, many people from Carrier Row walk onto the base, so I'm assuming there will be no walk-ons, or we might not know that, there might be a separate area where they have to social distance, or how does that?
That is something that we have been talking about. I, and I believe the base as well, like the idea of the cars simply because it's a controlled access, we can get them in and out. Once you have people walking, it becomes, you know, that's a long area that you have to control in terms of social distancing and such. So, at this moment in time, it, what we have discussed is a drive-in, drive-out type scenario, but I'm more than willing to bridge that with the base once we're able to.
And I don't think it's a big deal. I had, I've been having a number of conversations prior to knowing that we might be able to go onto the base, you know, in Carrier Row and New Dutch and also in suburbia where the traffic seems to affect on Fourth of July, and they, they were up for anything, they were thrilled that we were able, the possibility of even doing this. So, I just want to make sure that we explain the rules so there's no surprises. I mean, we've had decades of one way, and so I just want to make sure, and I'll help in the communication as well, but it's, if it's no cars, it's, you know, if it's cars only, it's cars only, and Carrier Row and everybody else plan accordingly type thing.
And part of this, again, will be that we, and again, part of the reason why we, I think we need to start sooner rather than later is to start socializing some of those rules, getting them out to the public so that everybody understands what the expectation is. Obviously, having an event on a base, an active base, is, I think everybody's gonna follow the rules more than maybe they will in other places. So, I, I think that letting everybody know what the expectation is right off the bat is gonna be important for this being a successful event.
Yeah, and talking to the people here, I talked to more of the vocal people in this area, and I didn't get one pushback, and this was before we could even get onto the base. They were so excited and agreed that this was so necessary to kind of restart, and what a perfect way to do this. So, I didn't hear any people, you know, talk about, oh my God, the droves of people coming down or anything like that, they were just grateful that this was even be considered.
One additional piece of information that I, sorry I omitted from my opening, is that we have been able to confirm that there are another, there are other cities that are now actually moving forward with their fireworks displays. A lot of them are in South County, however, there are some in our neck of the woods as well that will be doing fireworks. And so, we won't be, I guess, the only show in town at this point. So, I believe that there's a general, I think, more hallucinating of what exactly people thought maybe some of the restrictions might be in this area.
And Chief, do me a favor if you can. CERT for years has been begging to be part of the Fourth of July as far as being able to offer any kind of their support, and since Seal Beach isn't doing anything, they're jonesing to be able to do something. And you've got some pretty active people there, a group of people that'll work for free and really help kind of assist the police officers in whatever they need, whether it be parking or just kind of walking around, making sure everybody's kind of obeying the rules type thing, but they're, they're ready and willing to be activated at any time.
We'll do that. Who was that?
CERT.
CERT, yeah, CERT, okay.
West County CERT, they, they've been wanting to get involved with years, even if it's just to help keep the traffic flowing or whatever, and they're, they're a pretty active group, good group, so keep that in mind because free labor is free labor and especially if they've been trained.
I have one other item on the staff report under discussion. I believe it was Mayor Pro Tem Chirco last time we talked about this, that said negotiate with the fireworks company since they probably are going to have a surplus of fireworks with the shows that were canceled. With option A, option B, and option C, none of those, I think, are ground fireworks. They're all gonna be shot up into the air. I think Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tem Chirco suggested that the negotiation was that instead of a 20-minute show, it would be an hour long. And so, I'm wondering from staff, which option is the hour-long show?
So, actually, I agree completely that the idea that we could have a longer show would be great. I will say this, though, that the base has, again, asked that we're, we not expand the scope, that we shrink the scope as much as we can, and so I think that the timing limit was also a consideration for them as well.
What are we talking about in terms of time?
I, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
What are, what are we talking about in terms of time?
I believe it's a 22-minute show.
Correct. Traditionally, it's a 22-minute show.
And I learned something today that I did not know, that Disneyland, the biggest shells that they fire off are, are five-inch. So, if the council were to elect to go with option A, you're out shooting Disneyland. Very impressive.
Nice. This year, everybody's out shooting Disneyland.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Mark.
Okay. Is there a maximum capacity or maximum number of vehicles that the base would allow in?
So.
We haven't really gotten down to that situation. When we get really down into the planning of it, we will map out the square footage of the tarmac and the east ramp and all that, and then we will come up with a number.
But I believe that, I'm sorry, just if I can follow up, is just that with regards to the capacity that we, that you've experienced in the past, we do believe that we can accomplish that while still looking at the social distancing element that we have in place.
Yeah, right. My concern would be if the base says, you know, a thousand cars can come in, but after that, we're closing it off, and then our streets and our neighborhoods have to deal with an influx because the nearest show is in South County. Do we know where the other nearby shows are gonna be? I mean, do we know Long Beach or LA or Pasadena? Do we know if they're doing anything?
Yeah, Knott's Berry Farm, there's one in San Pedro, there's one, Lakewood is doing something, but it's a little different than what they normally would do, and there are some discussions of some scattered others, but they have not been confirmed yet, one way or the other.
Okay. So, is it, is it a situation where, I know we're telling people you can come on with your vehicle, you gotta park six feet apart, are people gonna be bringing chairs when they get out of their vehicle? Is that allowed or?
At the moment, that's kind of, is the working assumption, is that people will be able to sit around their cars in their chairs, standing or sitting, that obviously, they would not be able to bring alcohol or anything like that, they would be in charge of policing themselves, picking up their own trash, those kind of things, and these are all items that we would make sure are part of the rules list that go out beforehand. And then also, the, also just the idea that we would be handing out rule sheets as people drive in and that, you know, we would be able to hold them to it, and if we were unable to hold them to it, that, you know, our friendly National Guard members with M16s would be able to.
Right. I mean, my concern, and I've talked to a lot of my neighbors as well, with the old information that the base was gonna be closed for, for access, and I got a different general response than Shelley did and then Councilmember Hasselbrink did, which was, let's not spend the money this year if we don't have to, and especially if we can't go on the base, and especially if there's a risk of our neighborhoods getting flooded by, by, by people. Now, obviously, the situation has changed, but I do still have some concerns. Let me ask you, last time we met, we talked about looking into whether the proceeds from the race on the base could be used for a different event if we don't use them for the fireworks show? Did we ever get an answer on that?
And the answer to that is no, sir. That, that question is up at, in Sacramento right now, we have not received word back one way or the other. That being said, we have checked in with Republic with regards to their donation, and again, we would be able to repurpose that money. And again, those are, those are options, obviously.
But we would be able to repurpose Republic, so we wouldn't lose that money in the event we didn't go forward.
Again, we would need to make sure that Republic is happy with the, whatever we were going to repurpose that money to, so that's a discussion for us to have, should the council decide that they, they want us to go back and talk to Republic, but just in, in passing that they seemed open to the idea.
We also have the carryover funds from past year's event. Every year that we had over, we put it into this account, and that is actually all being deposited into next fiscal year. So, you'll see, it is gonna be a much higher amount than any year from now on, but that is also funds to be taken into consideration.
The amount that we're being, or the action we're being asked to either take or give direction on tonight is purely the cost of the fireworks themselves and not the cost for the additional manpower for cleanup, the additional cost for parking, the additional cost for porta-potty. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, the, the 32,000 is, is covered as we talk because of donations and appropriated funds. What about the additional cost? What are we looking at for that aspect?
So, I'll let Ron and Emmeline speak to the specifics there, but those funds have already been accounted for within the operational budget.
Correct. So, you're, you're absolutely right, Councilmember Gross, is, you know, we have to pay for the parking company, we have to pay for the rentals of the cones, we have to pay for the part-time staff because we still have to clean up, but we estimate that that's probably gonna be anywhere between $10,000 to $15,000. And so, like Chuck said, that we, it's already embedded into our project, projection for our budget projection.
Excellent. So, I believe that some of those costs will be offset, excuse me, I'm sorry, some of those costs can be offset by the funding that we were going to get from the city of Seal Beach, should the council decide to move forward.
Good. Thank you.
So, is there a breakdown on how much parking costs?
I'm sorry, sir, I think you asked if there was a breakdown on how much the parking would cost?
Yes.
So, and I'll let Ron speak to this, but given the fact that we're going to be changing the, I'll call it the mode of operation here a little bit, there'll need to be additional cones, there'll need to be additional people to, you know, direct people into those slots. So, I'll, I would imagine that it'll be slightly more expensive than it has been in years past, but Ron, I don't know if you have a ballpark of?
No, again, this is a conversation we have to have with our contracted vendor, but we will definitely do our best to try to cut costs as much as possible. You know, like, for instance, I give example off the top of my head, because of the traditional scope of our, of our event, Public Works is out there doing various jobs, they're not really particularly putting cones out anymore. I could utilize them to put the cones out, thus saving quite a few dollar amounts because, you know, they're getting paid at a different funding, because they gotta be there anyway, so I could just double dip and use them for two, two tasks instead of the traditional one task.
So, are we ready to make a motion or?
Not yet. I mean, sorry, sorry, Dean, I just have a couple more points. I mean, obviously, from my perspective, I really want to do a fireworks show. I mean, this is great for sense of normalcy, everybody to do it, get things back to normal, celebrate our country, have kids see fireworks. I'm just wondering if there's something we're not thinking about here. I mean, other cities are canceling their fireworks show. Why are they canceling their fireworks shows? Is it that they don't have the space to do it safely and we do, or is it a different circumstance? I just want to make sure we're considering everything and, and considering what can go wrong, and what, what, what should we be thinking of here now that the base is open?
If, if I might, Mayor Pro Tem, this has been a topic of conversations in many different circles, city manager circles, I know that Ron and Emmeline in the different groups that they're a part of have been talking about this, and the chief as well. So, I'll allow each one of them to weigh in just as what they have been hearing from their groups. From a, from the city manager's circle, obviously, when the discussion first arose out of should we or shouldn't we, I think the vast majority of city managers dismissed it right off the bat simply because of the additional strain. You know, it's a, it's another event, it's another thing, we're going through, you know, furloughs, layoffs, and each city is approaching those issues differently, and that a lot of them were also funding them internally out of their general fund. That obviously is, is not the case here. We seem to have a different set of circumstances, and then also, we, because of the base, have a slightly different situation that led me in a direction that some of my, I have options that some of my colleagues don't have. That being said, some of them have reconsidered that position and are starting to add those, those events back in. But again, the, the questions that I think that you all are raising are the ones that every, they're all asking themselves as well, is crowd control, ensuring that they're providing a safe environment for their residents, and then also just ultimately, this year is a little different than any year ever, and so that's a bit unknown. Chief, I don't know if you, in your conversations with, with other chiefs, if there's, there's more or other things that were brought into consideration?
I think that Newport Beach was the only one that came out right away and said they were gonna have their Fourth of July celebration, no matter what, and they put out what they call a Code Charlie, asking for a bunch of officers in advance that would be able to deploy on a mutual aid situation. One of the things I told the chief at Newport Beach is I said, I, I know you know about Code Charlies, and I, and because it's a planned event, that is not a mutual aid event necessarily, it's a, it's a planned event on your own making, so you're gonna have to pay for the salaries of anybody that shows up to your event, you know, and just make sure you know that. He goes, yeah, well, we're not worried about that. And I said, okay, good. And then, but most of them were worried, it was mostly about optics, you know, just because of the timing that they would have to made that decision with, you know, with the, where we were in the phasing of opening, reopening, so they're worried about that, and they're, like you said, the city manager, they're also worried because a lot of them are in the cutback modes of their departments and personnel, so they're just worried about the optics of, because some of those expenditures were coming out of their general funds and not, they weren't being, you know, compensated from some other funding source. And so, and, and I think that was primarily that, and I think just because some of them, well, that, that was it, really, and. But I, I was just looking at this, Ron, and I'm not sure, but, about it, but if it's six feet, six feet, six feet, six feet for the average car length, that's about 486 square feet a car. So, I don't know how many cars you're gonna be able to get on, on there, but that's, that's a pretty big footprint to keep six feet away from the front, back, and sides. And so, anyways, that's it.
You know, I would remind you that we've got a million square feet of tarmac, of concrete out there, if they make that available. I know Ron and Emmeline would know how many cars we've been able to accommodate in the past, and so I'm not sure how many we've actually have. We've also have charged a parking fee up until, I think, last year.
Based on a million, I think we could get at least 2,000 cars in there.
Yeah.
We're not allowed to charge the parking fee anymore, the base won't let us.
Sadly, that is, that is correct.
Yeah, they were very adamant about that.
I think we need to rec.
I know Huntington Beach is trying to rework their fireworks, you know, they have a big thing on Fourth of July, they've canceled their run, they've canceled the, the festival and everything, but they're definitely still, according to Barbara Del Glaze, are still doing the fireworks show for the same reasons.
Mayor, were you gonna say something?
I was gonna, a couple things. One, I, I think that we should be able to calculate the social distancing problems, but you gotta remember, we're not just putting cars six feet apart, we gotta account for chairs being next to those cars. chairs being next to those cars. A chair from from two from two cars that are next to each other is probably going to leave a foot between the two people and the chairs. If if we actually are going to account for a car and a chair on each side, that's going to double the amount of space each car needs. But and let me say upfront, I'm in favor of doing this if we can get cars on the base. If we can't, I'm not in favor of. And and I'd like to ask, how do we change course if that's the desire of the council if we find out we can't get on the base?
And if I may, counsel, and maybe that there is a compromise to be had here, is there, again, within fifteen days of the of the signing of the contract, so the around the fifteenth or sixteenth of this month, if we are unable to have all of the calculations and have all of the social distancing items worked out, we are allowed by the contract to be able to say, okay, we are going to push and put this into two thousand twenty-one and have the vendor hold our fireworks until that time. Also, if we were to go past that date, or I'm, yeah, past that date, we would incur a, I'm sorry, how much?
Thirteen hundred.
Thirteen hundred dollar fee. So fifteen hundred dollar fee to allow us to see if we needed more time in order to get those items.
Thirteen.
So thirteen hundred, I'm sorry. So if if the council were as comfortable with the idea of us moving forward and getting answers to all of these questions that you've asked, essentially what we've put on the line is that we have either purchased the fireworks for this year or for next year, I guess, is kind of the the fallback position.
Chad, I think I think you're jumping you're jumping ahead, though, of the fact that just because I think it should be this way, not everybody always agrees. It works in my house, but not not in real life. And I don't know. Well, it used to when I was single, I was thinking, you know, the dog, the dog really listened well. Even he's gone to Tina's side now, so. But, you know, I have to ask my colleagues, if we if we are we going to try this if if we can't use the base? Can we overcome the logistical nightmare that you're going to have if if there's no base available?
I I'll speak up. Sorry, Dean, you can go if you if you want to go first, doesn't matter. I would not be in favor of doing it if we cannot get access to the base. I just think we're inviting a lot of people in our city with nowhere to put them if we don't have the base. So that's my position. I would also just alert the the city attorney, I'm not entirely sure that the contract language mirrors with what I think Chad is saying and what our understanding is about being able to cancel. I mean, the the contract language says if we say if we cancel in response to COVID-19 pandemic, you know, attorneys can argue all the time about whether a cancellation without any real change circumstances in the pandemic itself is sufficient to trigger that clause to cancel or to reschedule. So I I would just suggest we clarify that and say, you know, if we cancel before fifteen days for any reason, I mean, why, we could just tell them right now, look, we need you to be more flexible, rather than just us trying to allege it's because of the pandemic. I mean, if we come back in two weeks and some facts on the base have changed, but not the COVID pandemic itself, I would want that to be sufficient to get out of the contract if this is the direction we're in.
Yeah, I I can answer that or respond to that a bit. I'm sorry. So the language added with respect to the COVID-19 pandemic, we've actually gone back in and tried to add language clarifying that the force majeure provisions would be triggered if we're unable to or the city determines not to move forward with the show in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. That's the new subsection five as amended in section five point one that you're referring to. The one distinction here is that in previous years, the city has always had the opportunity to cancel and reschedule. What the new language this year provides, or attempts to provide at least, is it allows us to reschedule to a later date so that we would actually be able to move, rather than scheduling six months in advance, we'd be able to go through September of the next year, which means the city would be in a position to move the whole display forward to twenty twenty-one July fourth celebration. That's not what we've had traditionally, it's been limited. And then also the fees that the vendor has asked for if there is a push forward due to the continuation of social distancing orders or anything else that leads us to believe that we can't allow folks to gather and assemble to watch the display. The fees under the COVID-19 exception are actually less than what would be asked for if we rescheduled for any reason at all. So we could push back and try to open that language up, but it would take further negotiations with the vendor to to make those revisions at this stage. I'm sorry, Councilmember Trico, you seem to be muted.
Sorry. Yeah, no, and it was five point one that I was looking at, but to me, it's not, it's not as clear that we can cancel for reasons other than the COVID-19 pandemic. And and I'd hate to get into an argument about that, but I I hear you, you're addressing it. On the rescheduling, and perhaps I'm missing something because I did review this kind of quickly, the last sentence of the rescheduling, section six, says if we're rescheduling, it has to be no later than six months from the scheduled date.
Whereas under section five, meaning if we schedule for a force majeure event, which we've now tried to identify as also being the COVID-19 response, that switches us out more than six months, that allows us to reschedule to any time up until September sixth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
Whatever that's worth.
Okay, all right, I understand. I've just, I'm hesitant because I'm dealing with a huge force majeure issue at work on a contract. And and the argument I'm getting is the circumstances of the pandemic have not changed, other things have changed, and therefore you can't use the force majeure clause to evoke, to to try to get out of the contract. Anyway, I think I think you're you're addressing it, so we'll be okay, hopefully.
We've got two attorneys agreeing?
I don't know what to do.
Well, I mean, if if you want to see the sport of it, we could keep going.
But until we get live football back, I think this is going to be exactly what we need.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question quick, Michael?
Yes, sir.
Does that, so in that contract, then, if, like, right now, you can't have crowds more than two hundred and fifty, I mean, you can't have crowds up to two hundred and fifty, right? You can only, so there will be a crowd larger than that, obviously, if we do this, that we that we have, even if we do social distancing, we're going to have, would that be one of those things, what they would say, you know, yeah, you can't do it because it's larger than a two hundred and fifty person crowd at an event?
So the the reality is, if anyone's saying we can or cannot do it under the contract, that that's a call the city will need to make, it's not really intended for some outside non-contract party to try to shut down the event. So as we move forward, trying to figure out the configuration of vehicles facing on the base and logistics and as to whether or not it's a practical way to host this event, we're the ones in the driver's seats in determining whether or not we're comfortable moving forward in, you know, given the background of this COVID-19 pandemic. From the vendor's perspective, their plan is to move forward and to fire the fireworks unless and until we tell them to back off. So it's really an issue between the two parties at this point.
Would it be advantageous for us since the county health officer in each county seems to be the one authorizing or approving stuff? Would we need to go to the county health officer and lay out our plans to make sure we're within guidelines? I mean, we're, in reality, we're doing everything we can short of saying we're going to count heads, and I don't think that's the plan. We may restrict the amount of of cars coming on and and working once they're on to make sure that social distancing and the mask, et cetera, are are part of the program. That might be a chat question.
If it's the desire of the council, we can definitely check with the county health official with regards to what exactly they see as their guidelines with regards to events of this sort. Again, I there's a, you know, the, you receive an update from me almost weekly about the changes that the of the different orders that are coming down. So again, that is a very fluid situation.
And this is federal property as opposed to city or state property. So I guess if we want to do a deep dive, we figure out who on the federal level. If the base has said it, that's that's the federal level.
Yeah. So our conversations with the with base personnel is that they are operating under federal charter and that they essentially get to make their own rules absent of what the guidelines are from the state. Whether or not that is a legal argument that stands up in court, I I, again, I'm I am not an attorney.
So Mayor Pro Tem, were you asking for a a plan, or maybe the mayor, a Plan A or a Plan B? Plan A that we go ahead is, we've been discussing, Plan B, we have an option if for some reason we can't put people on the base. That option might be what we've talked about before, which I don't think the mayor is in favor of, and that's simply going ahead and shooting the fireworks off for the benefit of the community who can view it from wherever they're comfortable in viewing it.
That's basically correcting. My 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 biggest problem is is logistics. And and if, I I'd like to proceed first on the on the on the fact that if we go on the base, okay? We do need to know how many cars we're going to be allowed. And if you if you think of a car as, let's say, six feet across, and then you're going to have room for a chair to social distance from another chair, you're going to need you're going to need the car, you're going to need four or five feet for the chair, and then you're going to need another six feet to the next chair. So every every car potentially is going to use up fourteen or fifteen feet across. So normally, where three cars would go, one car will go.
Yeah. But but we've done, when we did the wing, wheels and rotors event and had the show cars out there, we allowed that kind of distancing for the same purpose because most of those people come in chairs or come with chairs and stay by their car. And I believe it was, I believe it was fifteen feet between vehicles.
Yeah, that's what I think it would calculate out to. And my my question becomes if if they need fifteen feet wide, I don't know how tall along the car is, I think it's seven feet, maybe eight feet, seven or eight feet, then you need six feet on either side of that also. So you need to, we need to figure out the square footage that one vehicle will take up in relation to the others and find out how many square feet there are available. It's easy to do if you're mathematically con.
I think we did that, right? It was four hundred and eighty-six square feet per car, average car length being fifteen feet, six feet wide. And then there's a million square feet on the base, so it puts about two thousand fifty-seven cars possible that they pull up from end to end.
And that's just using the tarmac, not the runway, correct?
It's using everything.
They're going to let us use?
The tarmac is a million square feet.
The what?
I said the tarmac is the million square feet.
Okay.
We've we've done the show. I think we've done the show in the past where the stage and the shooting of the fireworks took place on the east end of the tarmac with people and vendor booths and so on, and then the parking behind that. So what we would be doing essentially is just having on the east end the pyrotechnics folk, and the rest of it would be set up for cars.
I don't think it's the best idea to have people outside of their cars, only because I'm thinking of children, who, once they're free, can be more difficult to corral back in. Saying that from just having my son's promotion parade and the few children that I saw out, parents had a hard time trying to catch them again. These babies have been locked up, so if they get out, it might not be easy to just keep them in a seat. So my suggestion would be just ask the people to watch from their cars.
Yeah, I mean, I hear you, Tanya, that that sounds like a legit issue. Then then I start to wonder, if people are in their cars, you can't see as well, right? And then is it worth it? Is it worth spending this money that we could repurpose for something else? Avoid avoid the issue, avoid, you know, potential health issue, having this many people in one space. Yes, they'll be distanced, right? Issues like Tanya mentioned, there's the cost, there's the fact that some crazy stuff is going on right now, and we're going to have a ton of people coming onto the base. I don't know, I don't know. I'm on the fence on this one, it's a tough one.
What do we need to to put us, put this up to revoke, a motion or what? Or is a vote needed?
Yeah, the the matter before the council tonight is whether or not to award the contract as appended to your staff report. So if it's your desire to move forward with the contract this evening, we would need a motion and then a vote on that motion.
Okay, then I'll I'll go ahead and make that motion that we proceed with the contract based on staff direction, using option A, which is the larger shells, and that staff will come back to us at our meeting on the fifteenth with the final details in terms of how many cars, if there's an option B, if something happened. That'll be my motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, I'm going to make a counter motion. Do I need to vote on the first motion or do I go ahead?
We we can take a vote on the first motion or we can ask if Councilmember Gross is willing to hear the counter motion and entertain that.
Dean, would you like to hear the counter motion?
Sure.
Okay, I I really would like, I'm not making a counter motion as much as, I'd like to add on that we recognize if we cannot do it on the base, we're not going to do And I don't, so I, maybe it's a separate motion that we're, to add an addendum that if we that if we can't do it on the base, we cancel. That's my motion.
For, for sake of conversation, could I add just one, one piece of information to that? If the motion moves this evening to approve the contract, the council will be obligated, will execute the agreement, and we will be obligated to pay the deposit to the vendor. There would be an option to reschedule the event at no additional cost up to 15 days prior to the event. But, but we are committing to moving forward with this vendor for, for a fireworks show, whether that occurs this year or whether ultimately we decide that we're pushing it into the next year. So I just want to clarify that if a, an affirmative vote moves forward this evening, that the city is committing to enter into this binding contract with the vendor. If, if alternatively, there's a, there's a desire to obtain more information, um, you know, I think we would need to move forward with perhaps additional conversations outside of actual approval of the contract this evening.
Hey, Richard, Richard, won't we have time if we approve this tonight just to set the contract? Won't we have time by the next city council meeting when we'll have a lot more information regarding logistics to go ahead and cancel it at that time if it's not working out? I mean, right now, we're, we will have time, we have, we have another crack at this. At least we can move this forward based on the information we have right now. As you know, things are changing hourly and daily, and at least move forward. And then at the city council meeting, give an update and then change any, uh, type of action by then without any complications or penalties.
Yeah, and I, I agree, Shelley. You know, it, uh, I was just trying to get in there if, what happens if we don't, if we don't have the base, because then it becomes a logistical nightmare in my mind. And even people I've spoken to who are for the fireworks are against it if it's gonna mean people from the outside are gonna come in and sit in neighborhoods. That, to me, is gonna be the ultimate disaster.
I agree.
Both park, parking-wise and per, private property-wise. But I'll remove my motion for now and we'll vote on Dean's motion, is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay, so all in favor?
Uh, roll call, please.
All in favor of Dean moving? All in favor of Dean?
You break it up. Go ahead, Wendy.
I do, we'll need, I'm sorry, we'll, we'll need a roll call vote for this as we are in teleconference.
Yes, okay.
Now, I have a motion by council member Gross, seconded in by, uh, council member Hasselbrink for staff recommendation, uh, with the staff bringing back a report on the 15th with final details of the event. Uh, roll call, Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Turco?
Yes.
Council member Dobie?
Yes.
Council member Gross?
Yes.
Council member Hasselbrink?
Yes.
But I'd clarify, city clerk, that it was with option A?
Yes. Option A.
Dean did state that, making the motion.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a good discussion.
Yeah.
Um, we will go on to the closed session, Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council will now adjourn into closed session to discuss item 4A as listed on this evening's agenda.
Thank you.